To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us back together one more time, Lord. Just continue to lay your blessings upon these men and women as they leave this city and off of these citizens. If I'm listening, I can go through the back tonight. Lord, continue to play your blessings on those towns. You're holy and we pray.
Well, Councilman Reed is absent tonight, but we do have a forum, so we'll proceed with business. First up is approval of tonight's agenda. Does any council member have any questions on tonight's agenda or any modifications to it?
Moved to accept.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Citizens comments? Hearing no citizens comments tonight, we will proceed on to our consent agenda. That includes the minutes of our November third meeting as well as appropriations ordinance thirteen oh four.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. All right, on to items of business tonight. We've got two. First up is discussion of the balances of our electric and water funds.
This agenda item really could have been broken into four parts, but I've lumped it all together. But if we want to kind of talk through all of it, it's really four different things that I'm suggesting we take a look at. Over the last several years in the electric and water funds, we've seen depleting cash balances for both of those. Some of those, it is due to transfers to the reserve funds. So it's not like it's complete loss. We are transferring to reserves for future projects. But there has been some depletion of those cash balances. So as with everything, over time, costs for supplies has increased, and that's especially true with the electric side of things. KMU did a fact sheet that I included that shows the percentage increase from 2020 to 2024 of a lot of these things that are commonly used, from transformers to meters to wire. For the electric side, we don't charge a customer fee when there's a new service installed. So if somebody needs a transformer or anything else, we just, we go put it in. And same with a meter. Where on the electric side, when we do a street cut and a hookup, all of that, we're recouping those costs. They're a direct bill for that meter and for that service. But on the electric side, we don't do that, other than recouping those costs over time through the electric charge. So I also included that out of those two funds, five and a half employees' wages come from the electric fund, and one employee is being paid out of the water fund, just to give you an idea of how much personnel costs are budgeted in those. These utility funds really need to look like a business, in my opinion, and operate separate. You know, these are not paid for out of tax dollars. They really should be self-sufficient and self-sustaining. And so that's why I'm bringing this for your discussion tonight, because at this time, if we continue with the same trend, in a few years, we're going to be, we need to have a harder conversation. So starting with the electric fund, there are really three things I would like to take a look at. One is the fuel cost adjustment. The second is the minimum meter charge, and then the third is the rate structure for customers that use over 5,000 kilowatts per month. So I've included our current rate structure, what the code says. We have a $15 per month minimum meter charge, and then zero to 5,000 kilowatt hours is 12 and a half cents per kilowatt, and then over 5,000 is 10 and a half cents per kilowatt. And then you'll see section C of the code that charges for the sale of electric current by the city of Greensburg shall be subject to a fuel cost adjustment. The fuel cost adjustment shall be computed, added, and collected with each utility billing. All consumers will have their billing adjusted upwards to include their proportionate share based on kilowatt hours used per month of any increase in the city's average purchase energy cost per kilowatt from any source. So month to month on our KPP billing, depending on what fuel costs were, some months we receive a credit, some we are charged extra for when fuel costs are higher. This year, we've done well so far, and in 2023, we had good years. But you'll remember back, 2022 and 2024 were not so good. And I did include a spreadsheet that included that history month to month of 2019 through current. So you can see month to month what those charges or credits were. To my knowledge, we've never, in recent history, being almost 20 years, passed this along to customers. It has been in the code since 2006, but I don't know that it's been implemented in that time period. From talking with other staff members, nobody can remember ever having that as a line item on our bills. It is pretty common in cities across, and of all utilities, I should say, not just cities, but from large co-ops to the evergies of the world, that they have charges like this on their bills. So that's not something that we are currently practicing, even though it is in our code. Another thing I would like to look at is the minimum meter charge per month. And we have been at $15 for 25 years. That was implemented in May of 2000. And then I included the history of that, starting 1978, we were at $4, and 1979 moved to $7, 1998 to $10, and then in 2000 to $15. So for 25 years, we've had the same charge there on that monthly minimum. And that might be a way that we could look at helping to stabilize the revenues there by increasing that monthly minimum. And that just helps to cover the costs of transformers and meters and all of those things on a monthly basis, and is a budget, a budgetable amount, I should say, because we know about how many customers we have and what that revenue will be coming in, where kilowatt hours can fluctuate year to year. At this time, increasing that by $5 per month would bring in about $38,000 per year with the current number of customers we have. The third item on electric I'd like to talk about is the over 5,000 per kilowatt customer rate. We do have some of these customers. I apologize, I don't have that number of how many we have. But our cost of electricity does not go down with how many kilowatts we purchase. It's always the same for our city bill that we receive from KPP each month. So there, there are some loss there of revenue that we're not passing along to customers, which, you know, for higher utility users, you know, that does make a difference on their monthly bill. And some of those, you know, we might want to have a conversation with of who they are, because they're probably nonprofit or governmental entities here in town. But our cost for that electricity doesn't change per kilowatt. So it might be something else to consider to look at. I don't know if we want to maybe break and have a conversation about electric, because that was a lot.
Yeah, I think that might make sense to discuss the electric fund and the various options, and then after that, we can move on to the water fund. The council, Stacy kind of outlined three potential areas that we could help stabilize our electric fund, and maybe get, bring in some additional revenue and make sure that's solvent long-term. Council, have any thoughts, questions, preferred methods that have been outlined, or any other ideas?
The fuel adjustment costs, that's something we have wrote up, we could be doing, we just.
It's already, yeah, it's already on the books, but not something we have done in practice.
Yeah.
So it would require no ordinance change or anything. It's already exists in our code, in our rate structure.
I think to me, if we're buying it at a higher cost, we kind of have to sell it at a higher cost, you know, which covers that part of it.
We don't have these funds to make the city rich.
Right.
But we, we cannot be going in a hole, because we haven't went along with the times.
Right. Yeah, we're not trying to pay shareholders, you know, like larger electric utilities. We're, we're just trying to stay.
Keep the lights on.
Keep the lights on and stay in the black.
That's right.
And, and plan for a rainy day, when we, we need a major project.
And as, as long as everything, our infrastructure is in good condition, we can take some of that money and put it aside.
Right, for the day when it's not.
Well, that's true, but if we're still running on rates and, and costs from three years ago, four years ago, it ain't going to happen. So I, I would say upon her what she has thought-wise, we should consider that highly.
I, I think I agree. No matter what, we want to make sure that, you know, the revenues that we're bringing in from our electric fund are enough to cover all of our costs, and also, again, plan for making sure we're maintaining that infrastructure well into the future. True. Just the question is, we've got a few different options. Do we do all of them? Do we do one or two of them? Like, what's the optimal mix that's going to be? Again, make sure that the, the funds are solvent and stable long-term, but also the costs are predictable and palatable to our customers. And you did do the math as far as if we increased the minimum charge, connection charge from 15 to 20, that would be about $38,000 a year. Have you done any numbers on the large customer?
No, I apologize, I didn't break that down, and I should have. I wanted to more, kind of take your temperature, and I can provide that, because.
Honestly, of the three, I'm the least in favor probably of that one for, for two reasons. One, probably our largest customers, that's going to be the hospital, that's going to be the school.
Yeah.
And that's, at the end of the day, passing additional costs onto tax periods. Even though it's not coming to us, it's a bill that they're going to have to pay through the school tax levy or hospital or, or something like that. And the other is, you're right, Stacy, in that, you know, we pay the same amount per kilowatt hour, no matter if we're using half the electricity or twice the electricity. But the difference is kind of our rates that we pass on to customers isn't just paying for that power, it's paying for transformers, it's paying for distribution and things like that. So in that sense, those costs for us don't really go up, you know, the more someone uses, which I think is kind of the logic, but.
The economy of scale.
Yeah, it's kind of an economy of scale, so it doesn't make sense maybe to me to discourage bigger users or punish bigger users. So, but I'd be interested to know just how much money we'd be leaving on the table. Is that 10,000 a year or 100,000 a year? I don't know, but that would be good information to have. And as far as path of least resistance on the fuel cost adjustment, it's already in the code. That would be an easy one, and just looking through some of your numbers, the impact on our electric fund looks like it would be honestly far larger than even the $5 a month to the minimum charge. So if we're looking for something that would have, make a big difference to the health of that fund, I'd say that's an easy one that's likely to have a big impact. And protect us, the bad thing about those bad months is they're kind of unpredictable. You know, they're dependent on a whole host of factors outside of our control or outside of KPP's control. So committing to following through on those fuel cost adjustments basically kind of cushions us from those swings, whereas right now, we're just, if we have a bad month or a series of months like we've had in a couple of recent years, it protects us from losing a lot of money in those, in those times.
Because you, you look at 2022, for instance, there's $120,000 in fuel adjustment.
But those are just my two cents. Council, your thoughts?
I agree. The two that stand out to me are the top two. The third one, you know, maybe with some more information, but the other two, excuse me, something I'm on board with.
I agree with that too. Those were the two that stuck out to me as kind of going in for, and made the impact of how schools or schools negatively. If you could do the other two and.
I'd be curious, what are we paying? And I know it changes every month, but roughly, like, what's the average per kilowatt hour? Is that a different thing, you know, just not overlooked in here?
I did not have that in your packet. I do, you know, it ranges depending on that ECA again, from on a six cents to eight or nine. Back in 2022, there were some months it was eight or nine cents.
So in those months, we have three cents a kilowatt hour that's paying for our distribution, transformers, our staff, and all of that, which honestly is not enough.
No.
I guess my only hesitancy, and I think I agree with everything everybody said, is if you increase it $5 a month for every meter, that really does pass more of the burden on to people who use significantly less power and maybe are on limited incomes. And agreed, though, that if you pass it on to the school or the hospital, they're just going to raise the tax levy, but the tax levy is either going to come out of the people that own resources and different things. So I sort of feel like raising the monthly charge disproportionately affects the lower income taxpayer.
And honestly.
More so that a rate adjustment and.
Nothing says we have to do all at once or anything like that. The good news is while the fund balances have gone down, it's not an emergency yet. So maybe we start with just one, see how it does over a year or two, and then if we have to take additional steps in the future, keep it solvent, we can do that. But I'm also comfortable, because I think the single biggest impact we would have to the bottom line of the electric fund would be that fuel cost adjustment, just based on the numbers that are presented. Again, not knowing the amount for the larger use customers, but I would be surprised if it would be even close to that fuel cost adjustment.
How hard will that be, though, to implement from an administrative standpoint, that fuel cost adjustment?
I don't think very difficult. You know, every month, the bill we get from KPP has all of that itemized line by line, so we know exactly how many cents. And then we know how many billed kilowatts each person has. And in our software, because this is common practice, I'm sure our software system can put a line in there, and it would bill proportionately. So if you use 800 kilowatts times .0015, or whatever that ends up being, it would be tacked on. It would just be an extra line.
They'd just be plugging in one number.
Right.
One time, and then it's off.
Right, and it would be, it would be for the previous month. So we're, KPP's projecting for November, because Dogwood is out right now in a scheduled outage, that our fuel costs are going to be higher for November. So when we get November's bill in December, taking a look at it, and then that would go on to the next, because they would hit about the same time that we do our billing, middle of the month.
And just for transparency and clarity for our customers, that, if there is a fuel cost adjustment that is passed on, that would, you know, show as a.
Separate line.
Easily readable.
Fuel cost adjustment.
$20 a month per year bill, or whatever it is.
And again, just about November, KPP's projecting that one to be a little higher, but also looking internally as a KPP board about how, with some of KPP's funds, potentially to soften that below, depending how it comes in. We won't know till next month when it's done, but looking at maybe as a board for KPP, how to soften that to the membership, so, because they're projecting, I think it was 3.3 cents or something. So pretty significant.
Are you wanting this decision on this tonight, or do you want to wait until next?
We can wait. Just kind of some discussion, I guess, and, and get your feedback on what, how, where we're standing today, what you're thinking. Other than the fuel cost adjustment, where that already exists ordinance, I just would want your blessing more than anything, because it's not something we've been doing in practice. Anything else that would require an ordinance change to our rate structure?
Well, council, do you want to think about it for a little while longer, get some additional information? And/or are you willing to move forward on, again, probably the fuel cost adjustment, maybe the only thing we might direct today, but nothing says we have to start today either on that.
Well, we can't wait till the electric fund gets in trouble before we do this, because then we've got to make a big jump.
Yeah.
I would, I'd rather ease them into it a little at a time than say, okay, folks, here you go. We're sorry, but our local law enforcement is going to bring you your electric bill when you pay them.
Is that something for, like, the fuel cost adjustment? We set a date to go in effect in January?
Sure. I would say, yeah, just if we wanted to do that, just a motion and a vote to, you know, begin, again, implementing that fuel cost adjustment that's already in our code to customers. Whether that's December first, January first.
Do you have a preference on bookkeeping wise? What would, would it be cleaner to start at January one versus?
It probably wouldn't matter, but I would think January one, because she's making other adjustments to other rates.
For, for a budget, to be able to look at a full year cleanly, that might be best. And then.
And probably also because we get the KPP bill.
That's what I was just going to say, we're going to see that next bill come, and we can take a look at it.
I would make a motion to start following what's in our code with fuel cost adjustment, starting in January one, 2026.
Second then.
It's been moved and seconded to begin implementing the fuel cost adjustment already in our code in the first of the year. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then, council, do you want to take a wait and see on those other two options? Get some more information, open that, you know, have another discussion in the next meeting or two? Or you want to wait and see maybe the effects of the fuel cost adjustment before we look at doing something else?
Could be a good idea. Just look the others over there. So get some, get some more feedback from her on it.
So hold off on any further adjustments to our electric rates, until we have more information.
I think what would be helpful for me is to see how many we have over that 5,000, what that would bring in, but then maybe what our total usage is to, or if we even increase to a quarter of a cent or something on the price just flat.
Like kilowatt usage?
Yeah.
Between one, 1.1 million kilowatts a month, about a million. Makes for easy math. Again, it depends on time of the year, but probably an average is a million. You can see on that spreadsheet, actually, I have, have it in there, the, the monthly usage, the metered kilowatts.
So milder months, around a million.
The shoulders are a million, and then up to one and a half.
Yeah. Well, I said, maybe wait and see what the fuel cost adjustment does for the health of that fund. In the meantime, if you have any other questions for Stacy on the health of the electric fund, let's, I encourage you to ask her, and I'm sure she can give us the information. Any other discussion on the electric fund? Okay, then let's move on to the water fund.
So similar, we had a rate, five-year incremental rate increase from 2019 to 2023, where each year, the minimum and the unit of 1,000 gallons for customers went up incrementally over that time. And you'll see, we actually have three rate classes, three customer classes in the water, where electric is just one rate, one rate class, we don't have it broke out, but water we do. So there is resident, residential, institutional, governmental is one class, commercial, and then out-of-city limits customers. I do have a breakdown of how many of each of those we have. We have 404 residential government institutional, we have 52 commercial, and 19 outside of the city limits. So you can see there at the 2023 rate, that's what we're at right now. We have not had any increase since that five-year incremental stepped increase. We completed that at the beginning of 2023. The last time before that, that rates were changed was in 2013, and I've included that just so you can have a reference of what that increased when we went to the five-year change was. At that time, the structure was a little bit different. There was a charge for the first 7,000 gallons, and then every 1,000 over that. So it did kind of have a stair step there, but we simplified it to just have a, a price per thousand, which makes it a little bit easier to understand. So again, here, you know, looking at, do we want to look at a change to the minimums across all three classes? Do we want to explore a conversation of a, a longer incremental increase, like we did for 2019 to 2023, where we stepped up a little bit every year? Or do you want to look at maybe a larger monthly minimum increase at one bite instead? So bringing that for, for your discussion.
I'm kind of in favor of going the small increases, just because it's kind of along the lines of what Wayne was talking about, is you are getting the money from the people using and not necessarily the, you know, the apartments or small users don't get impacted as great as, you know, somebody that uses more water.
So this, this rate structure is a little bit different, where the residential, institutional, governmental, so that would cover school, hospital, every residential is all in that same rate class.
So you're talking about just changing the minimum rate?
Potential, or if you want to discuss a, a larger rate change of minimum and/or the price per thousand gallons.
You're talking to the wrong person about changing the price per gallon.
You're correct.
Unless you want to.
That's where I was when we were talking about the electric fund.
Unless you want to decrease that, well, sure, let's talk about that.
Again, just kind of, I think, the same discussion we have with electric, and I kind of agree with Nathan that it probably makes the most sense, is most fair to try and pass the cost on to customers based on usage. So I would probably be more in favor of changing our rates for the per thousand gallons than the monthly minimum. If we do a monthly minimum, again, try to keep that as small as possible. But the other side of the coin is, we probably have quite a few users who use minimal water, and then also just a few that use, that have a lot of water. So having some projections to kind of know how much we would have to adjust each of those levers to kind of get to our goal of revenue would be helpful.
Okay, so for instance, I'm sorry I didn't get this included in the packet. We have 404 residential government institutional users. If we did an increase to a minimum of $20, that's $4.50, that's $21,000 per year. Moving commercial and outside of the city limits to 25 minimum, that would total with the residential institutional would give us about $26,000 per year with that minimum increase.
But you haven't run any numbers for changing the.
The rates.
The rates?
No. I wanted to have a discussion and see kind of what you guys, where you're leaning before I got. I, I can definitely crunch some numbers and rent some options, but wanted to see what you're thinking.
What if we took the minimum charge that you were suggesting, or you'd like to go to, and cut it, take what we're charged now and what you would like to move it to, and cut that in half, and then we could up our use heat rates just a hair also, if, if you want to do that.
And do it over a couple of years, or just, I see what you're saying. Cut it in half and then put it on the free side.
Take our, our minimum charge and jack it way up.
And I agree, that's probably a fairly fair way to do it. Kind of minimizes the minimum charge disruption, but also would minimize the impact on our biggest users. Kind of just spread it out a little bit.
Well, and it's not such sticker shock, like, just like the electric deal, that we, all of a sudden, we decide, hey, we need to raise the rates again, and we've got to make a big jump.
And I'd like to maybe just run some harder numbers on, again, kind of, the cash balances of the water fund have been falling in recent years. What's our target for additional revenue to kind of stabilize that, continue to build our reserves? So I know that, okay, yeah, we need to bring in an extra 50,000 a year in revenue, and then once we. And then once we know that that's our goal, we'd be able to know, okay, how can we kind of, where can we get that from? If we maybe get twenty thousand of it from the minimum charge, thirty thousand from the rates or whatever the mix is.
Where can we spread that out?
Yeah.
To, to come up with that number?
Yeah. So that might be one where next meeting or a meeting in the future, get some more information and kind of decide maybe how we want to spread that out. But I mean, it's the same philosophy as the electric fund. These funds have to be solid long-term and, uh, you know, continue to be able to pay for the water we're getting to our residents, so.
And someday we're going to be staring at some significant water projects.
Yeah. So again, we want to continue probably building those reserves as we have.
Yeah.
Does, does the water fund, not every month, but some months, not break even? I know in summer possibly not.
Yeah.
Winter months are a little different, I believe, probably.
For this year to date.
I didn't even look deep into that, so.
Or twelve thousand dollars upside down for this year so far, after the third quarter.
Typically, you have more leaks when it gets cold.
If what?
Typically, you'll have more water leaks when it gets cold.
Sure.
Well, and, uh, that also probably doesn't include some end of year transfers we may be doing to the reserve fund.
Right. We've, across these funds, I've halted transfers for now until we take a look at the end of the year, so.
And I, I think it's important for us to continue to build those reserve funds because we are going to have big expenses in the future for both of those funds. Whether it's a big transformer purchase, whether it's, uh, repair, whether it's, uh, updates and maintenance to the water treatment plant. We know those expenses are going to come and we're going to be a lot better off if we've got the money saved up to pay for them out of pocket rather than have to borrow money to do those.
Mm-hmm. Couple blocks of water line replacement.
Yeah.
For instance.
So, yeah, I, I think maybe just a kind of overview of kind of what we think the long-term goal for revenues would be to again, cover our current costs, but also build those reserves.
Mm-hmm.
And that gives us an idea of how much additional revenue we might need to generate. And then what's the fairest way to, you know, pass that, those additional revenue costs onto our consumers? Counsel, any other comments on the water fund or maybe just wait, get some more information and talk about it at a future meeting?
More information, please.
I agree.
Okay. Well, any other discussion regarding our utility funds? Hearing none, we'll move on to our other items of business tonight. Uh, nice discussion on the cost of living adjustment for city employees for twenty twenty-six.
Annually, the city council reviews this and uses the consumer price index for urban wage earners, the CPIW. And historically, they, these COLA adjustments have gone into effect at the first of the year. Uh, this was last reviewed in December of twenty twenty-four and I've given the history over the last, um, several years of what, um, the CPIW was and then what COLA was approved by the governing body for the following year. Uh, in October of twenty twenty-four, the CPIW rate was three oh nine point zero four six, an increase to three one eight point one three nine in October of this year. And that's an increase of two point nine four percent over the last year. Um, the previous year was two point four percent and council approved a two point four percent increase. Um, during the twenty twenty-six budget process, three percent was included in there, um, as part of the budget consideration and was adopted in the twenty twenty-six budget. I have calculated out what a three percent increase would look like on our current, uh, pay scale for your, um, consideration there and discussion. So, um, whatever you were, would decide if you wanted to have a cost of living adjustment that is approved by resolution, that updates our pay scale and our personnel manual. So I would bring that to you at the next council meeting if so desired.
Counsel, discussion on, uh, twenty twenty-six COLA for city employees.
I like, uh, you know, we feel like we might kind of have the discussion when we approved the twenty twenty-six budget and says they have three percent, which is pretty well in line with what the CPI at two point nine four. I'd be in favor of going with what we discussed on the twenty twenty-six budget of three percent.
I would agree, and then I'm just telling, telling up the numbers. It looks like from eighteen on, add up the percentages and it's actually gets bigger because it's percentages of percentages, right? But it's just straight percentages, twenty seven point four percent CPI adjustment over that period. And our adjustments have been like eighteen point nine.
Now, we've fallen behind.
So we've fallen behind and I think what the biggest assets the city has is employees. Sure seems like we've got a good program now and I hate to do something to compromise or jeopardize that, especially considering the party approved at three percent.
To counsel or in favor of the three percent that's budgeted?
When I get. It's three or four years ago, we talked about, it was brought up by a previous council member. After the first of the year, then we start whatever the guys approve here on this deal with them, we start merit ranges according to employees' averages, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At that time, it was proposed that we do one or the other, but not both. And that's, I'm, I'm back to that. Didn't understand what you were talking about at the time, but I do now. Um, and then we talked about the electric fund, there's five and a half employees paid out of that. How much is that every month or in the yearly basis? And yet we're jacking prices, we're jacking wages on up, you know? And it's just like you said about the water, electric usage for the school, stuff like that, where the taxpayers have to pay for that. Well, they're paying for this too. I, I, you know, the last two years, I, that's the way I've stood and I'm going to stand that way again, so. I'm not just going to rubber stamp a payday just every time it comes around. Sometimes I think we, we vote on this deal for all the wrong reasons.
I just want to advocate for the staff that we do have and I think they do a good job. And I think it's easier to keep staff that we have and the good trained staff that we've already invested in. And it's much harder to find and replace those people and more expensive on us in the long run to, to train and replace those people. And like Wayne said, with the breakdown, I mean, this is just flat out what, you know, the, the cost of living is increasing kind of exponentially more.
I don't disagree with that Haley, but it increases for everybody, not just city employees.
Yes. I agree, but our job is to, to take care of our employees. I mean, that's, that's why we're here, so.
We also have to be physically responsible too.
Well, you mentioned, uh, electric employees and cost of electric employees. I would say that if you just look at our linemen, what we pay our linemen, I would say we're well below industry averages for linemen. Um, we're very lucky to have some local people who are doing that, willing to stay here. And I think what we could do to encourage them to stay here is warranted.
Are they out working on electric lines every day like a regular lineman?
No, but that's again, I think.
I understand that.
It's required of a small staff.
Yeah, make somebody have the experience.
Yeah. Uh, as a small staff in a small community, got to have to have, wear many different hats throughout the day, no matter what your job title is. Um, but I think we heard from everybody, so maybe you Nathan, for your two cents, huh?
I'm, I'm not opposed to the three percent. Um, but listening to both sides here, I think we reward our staff for their, their work and stuff through the merit. The, the COLA should be, in my opinion, more based on the cost of living, you know, not on, so much on performance and stuff like that. But, you know, the cost of living, as we know, day to day, everything is increasing, so, I mean, we budget for it.
But I, I'd agree, the purpose of the COLA is distinct from the purpose of the merit increase. COLA is just to keep employees heads above water, make sure that the same stuff they can buy with their salary next year is the same as, as this year. Merit is there to reward and incentivize good work.
I don't remember, I know, I remember last year this conversation, I think she had a good breakdown of, um, what some of the merit increases were. I think it was.
One to two percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe it was even, gosh, maybe it was back in twenty twenty-three when there was like a seven point nine. Cause we were, I think that year maybe we had budgeted for six percent and we were going back and forth, you know? And, and anyway, we just, we talked a lot about combined, you know? And we were never looking at a full six percent with the COLA and the merit, you know? That most people were coming in at one point five to two.
Right.
Um.
I remember I had averaged out what the average for that year was and I don't remember, but I would say it was around two or less.
Yeah, I personally, and this is just my own opinion, I like having both of them just because the COLA is, I don't know, I don't know if you said it, but keeping your head above water, um, or maybe you said it.
Right.
You know, just to keep up with the, the cost of life, you know? And then the merit rate or, you know, increase is just for people to take pride in what they do and to, to continue to work hard and, and get recognized. And, and that's a way that we can recognize the employees for their hard work. And if there's an area that they need to improve on, you know, then it's like they need to carry a little bit just that they're still able to put food on the table and keep the salary on. I know we need to budget not only raw employees, but for the city too.
And then the other way to look at it too is this has already been incorporated in our twenty twenty-six budget. We will be levying taxes to accommodate for that, so we've already kind of planned into it. Um, it does seem like we have a consensus or majority of council who is comfortable with three percent. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
And I would just say too, I mean, it does, it didn't, or me too, I really go mine nose at the idea of somebody getting a raise just because things got more expensive, but I also have to take a step back and realize the opportunity for them to work hard and earn more money isn't always there as a government employee. And how do you do that? And how do you reward them? But even bigger, what's their cost of replacement? Because if the industry standard is going up three percent and we say this guy's underperforming or this gal's underperforming, when we go to the open market to try and recruit someone, it's going to be harder for us to recruit someone at that lower rate. You know, and so, I mean, I don't love the idea of a COLA either, but I think it's a sort of unnecessary equal. We're talking about a government entity that's not ran like a business. If this was ran like a business and you had an employee that was creating fifty percent more value than the next guy or gal, you could pay him fifty percent more, but we can't do that. And so since we can't do that, I think we have to sort of try and keep our wages and, and our rates competitive with other towns and other industries, so.
What about the people that don't get a cost of living allowance? They get, we budget money and levy the taxes to pay this, but the people that don't get a cost of living raise, they have to absorb this.
I think they work from city.
What other spots do we have?
I mean, I think that's.
I'm not talking about myself.
I think that's the nature of it.
Who don't get a cost of living raise. I'm sure you guys probably do.
If you're private business or.
You guys probably do.
We got one in the years.
I mean, I think if you're employed by someone, you can work harder and make them give you raises based off of how much added value that you create. And I know there are some people that thought it fixed income and that is more, but so security triples up a little bit each year too.
Don't quote me on this, but I don't think the school gets cost of living raised.
And again, you have another, it's pretty easy for them to, not easy, but they could sort of transition from industry to industry.
Well, also I'll go back to what, what Matt said a minute ago is we, we already budgeted for that, like it's already.
We're levying the taxes whether we do it or not.
Right, and I feel like if, if we're going to do that, then, you know, we kind of make that decision. And if we, maybe this conversation in the future needs to happen back when we're having, I guess we don't know necessarily what that rate increase might be at that time, but, you know, to be mindful of it. Like, it's already being taxed, I mean, it's already out there.
And to be fair, it is a discussion we have during budget time. It's one of the line items, it's built in as we're discussing the next year's budget. Um, but it does seem like we do have a consensus for a three percent COLA, the majority of council?
I'd make the motion.
Well, we can't approve it, we have to have a resolution, so.
We'll give you a resolution.
I would say.
I'll wait.
Staff will bring that, draft that resolution and bring it at a future meeting for a vote. And if your discussion on that business item? Hearing none, we will go to city staff report, Stacy.
Last week I had a virtual meeting with P E C to talk about the grant-funded sidewalk project. Uh, we went over the initial concept that they've put together since coming out here to do the engineering work or the survey work that they were here, I don't know, a couple of months ago now, um, and go over the project timeline. They'll be here in January to do onsite field check. Um, both K dot and P E C will be here for that. And then we'll continue wrapping up design and engineer work. And then it will go out for bid in August and let bids in September. So we still are tracking with the same timeline and won't see construction until the fall. We did discuss in the meeting about some concerns for various areas of town and also timing. I know, um, the area around the school has been mentioned and around Upland Inn with hunting season. And, uh, we talked through both of those and then just some other areas where they had some questions. And in general, just wanting to keep, um, existing structures where we can and minimal impact to any residents that, you know, where we'll be going across properties that are occupied. So, um, stay tuned, things are moving forward with that, but it's, it's a, a slower moving project. Um, with the help of some high school jag students and other volunteers, last Friday, we planted some flower bulbs in some of the planters on Main Street. Um, we've been battling the last couple of years where grasses have died out over time and bear dirt. And we've been working to plant some things, but, um, trying to, uh, get some other things planted in there for some color early in the spring and also to hopefully keep some of the weeds from popping up early in the year. So, um, I purchased a variety of, um, bulbs. It's called magic carpet blend. They're only get to be about six, uh, inches high, so they won't block any visibility on the corner. And over time, they are supposed to spread, so hopefully they will live up to their name of being magic carpet. Um, so hopefully we'll see some spring color, um, downtown when those come up. Uh, the airport is being swathed. Um, I did have a call from Mr. McCloskey Friday that he had some equipment breakdown and he was working on that, but he's working out there, um, when he's done, we'll go back and, and do a final cleanup, um, of mowing before winter. Um, last week, we mailed out, as required by K D H E annually, a notification of potential, uh, lead service line, either known or potential lead service line. We are now required, um, because of the EPA ruling on lead service line a couple of years ago, to do this, uh, notification to residents annually. So we mailed this out to about a hundred customers who we know have galvanized lines. We don't know that we have any lead lines, but galvanized is also included as, um, a trigger for notification. So if anybody asks, why did I get this, um, it's because they are on a known galvanized line. Um, so we are required annually to mail this out by K D H E and we did that last week. Uh, we received last Friday the deeds for the properties that were purchased at the tax sale, except for the one for the house at eleven South Grove that we previously discussed. We did receive a certificate of purchase for that property, um, from the county. So we at least have some documentation that, um, we purchased that house at the tax sale, but it's still pending redemption, um, right by S B A for up to, um, that year period. Um, now that the federal government is no longer shut down, um, we're going to be trying to reach out to S B A and, and make some contact there regarding that property. We've been unable to do so for forty-three days, um, because of the government shutdown. So now hopefully we can, um, reach out to them and make some headway. The thirty-day advertisement period for the three properties that the Kesh Paz applied for out of the land bank, um, a few meetings ago, that thirty days is now up. And so I'll be working on those documents to transfer that ownership over to them of those three properties that they applied for. And you gave permission, um, for them to purchase from the city. On the fourth was city. On the fourth was city council elections, and you probably already know their results, but, um, we will have two new council members and, uh, Nathan will continue on, um, for another term. Jason West and Dave Vernon will join us, um, at the second meeting in January. Uh, they will actually take the oath the second week, second Monday, um, but then the first meeting will be the, the third week of January, which will be on a Tuesday because Monday should be Martin Luther King Junior Day, if I remember correctly. And that's my report. Also included in your packet was Chief Dennis's report as well.
Any questions for Stacy on her reports or questions on the police report that was included in the packet?
I asked you two meetings ago about our project out at the airport, if you had a chance to talk to those characters, if they were going to take care of those piles of dirt.
Yes, they're not finished. They're still working out there. Um, I know there's still some work to be done inside the building and then final cleanup. Yeah, they're, they're not done yet.
I wonder if they would be interested in going back to between our entrance and Midwest Aviation's.
To the north?
Or along the road and see if they could fill in them ruts.
Okay. I'll make a note.
They're fairly deep. I mean, if they have some dirt left over.
Yeah, I need to go somewhere with it.
Get somewhere with it, that'd be a perfect place.
Any other questions for Stacy? Hearing none, we'll move on to governing body comments.
Talking about the planters and having kids plant, um, I wanted to update on the story boxes out there. I did visit with Tim Morton about the status of the story block, whatever they call them. Um, and there have been some issues with them and they are currently looking to replace them with some metal boxes if they can. Put pages in there with magnets instead of, and being wood, so hopefully we'll see those be replaced in the spring.
And this was a while back, but I know they were having issues with the weathering on the flexiglass as well.
Yeah, it was getting foggy and, yeah.
Any other governing body comments? Hearing none, uh, we do have an executive session tonight to discuss matters related to non-elected personnel, uh, for five minutes.
I'd like to move to go into executive session until seven fifty-six for non-elected personnel.
Seven fifty-six to be over an hour.
Okay.
No, it's seven fifty-six, I'm sorry.
We got it. Second.
The second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was wondering if it would all time walk.